Good evening. We're going to begin our June 10th regular school board meeting at this time. Let me get this thing moving. Call to order, roll call. Mrs. Burnett is not here. Everyone else is here. So I don't think we have to go through and roll call. A moment of silence if everyone would just be polite and give us a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Ms. Pearson, seconded by Ms. Hutchins to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? As such, we will vote on approving the agenda for June 10th, 2024. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Agenda passed. There is no presentations or recognitions, although we did have a number of athletes who did very well in the state, which was just this past week. And student principal reports, there are none. So we are up to delegations and requests to speak. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Culpeper County Public Schools. There will be no action taken by the board at this meeting and such items will be referred to the appropriate administration for future information and research. Personalities and behaviors of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. Each speaker shall limit his or her remarks to three minutes. No speaker shall be permitted to allocate any portion of his or her speaking time to another speaker. No speaker may address the board more than once per meeting. Delegations wishing to address the board are requested to sign in prior to the meeting with their name, address, and topic. And the sheet for this purpose was at the entrance is now in my hands. So at this point, Mr. Browning and Mrs. Browning, if you would like to address the board, please come forward. Microphone's right there. Think you have to turn it on? No, it's on, all right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You can take it out if you wish.
Okay.
It might be easier.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Vice Chair Hutchins, other members of the board, including my class of 82 classmate, Betsy Howard Smith. My name is William Browning, but as Mrs. Hutchins and Betsy know me as Yogi. I speak not only for myself, but for my mother, Mary Jo Browning, who joins me today as the librarian at the Culpeper County Junior High School. For years, she was proud to be a colleague of Ron Hutchins. For her service to the county, my mother was recognized by the Culpeper County Chamber of Commerce in 2019 as the Culpeper County Citizen of the Year. I would like to commend all of you on the board, all of the staff, my mother, and all educators here for your public service on behalf of the Culpeper County School System. It is an honor to speak with you today in favor of naming the CCHS tennis courts the Ron Hutchins Tennis Center. I also speak on behalf of the hundreds of tennis players who have the privilege of being coached by Ron Hutchins, including my teammate John Whitehead, who couldn't be here tonight, but was among those who brought forth this idea. Like John, I am a proud member of Coach Hutchins' 1979 Battlefield District Champion Culpeper Blue Devil Tennis Team. Betsy, you'll recognize these names. That team was led by our MVP, EJ Mills, who was undefeated in singles and with David Fralazo in doubles. EJ is a product of the public tennis courts in Culpeper. That team also included Beau Chase, Calvin Buchanan, Bill Elwood, Mike Bosworth, Tom Ford, Tim Ailer, and Keith McKenzie. While we didn't have as many as the fancy tennis lessons as our opponents or as pretty a ground strokes or as nice tennis clothes, we were in better condition, we were better tactically, we were closer as a team, and we were gracious, win or lose. In short, we were better coached. We came from different walks of life, from all parts of the county. Coach Hutchins gelled us into a team. He taught us the game, he encouraged us, he made sure we had fun. He did not evaluate us on ability or talent, but on effort, improvement, and sportsmanship. He had a growth mindset, not a fixed mindset. He believed in us, and we believed in him. He spent more time with the players at the bottom of the ladder than he did with the most skilled, because the tennis court was another classroom for him. Years ago, tennis, you may remember, tennis was often a sport only for the elite, but Coach was one of those who helped bring tennis to everyone. More than anyone else, Coach Hutchins grew the game of tennis in Culpeper, turning children on to the benefits of tennis, a healthy, fun, outdoor activity. In addition to being a wonderful coach, Ron Hutchins was a legendary teacher who spent his 43-year career in the classroom. Just like with tennis, time in Coach Hutchins' classroom meant you learned something, you laughed some, you enjoyed learning, and you felt better about yourself. I encourage you to adopt this resolution, not merely because he deserves it, but also because by naming these courts in his memory, Ron Hutchins' devotion to education and to tennis can inspire Culpeper schoolchildren today and for generations to come to play tennis, the sport of a lifetime, to discover the joy of learning, and maybe even inspire some of them to become educators and coaches. If the country club or some other private club would name their tennis courts in memory of Coach Hutchins, it would be quite an honor, but it would not be the most appropriate honor. The most appropriate honor for Coach Hutchins, where his name belongs, is on the Culpeper Public School Courts, his outdoor classroom, where he helped grow the game and opened up the joys of tennis to hundreds of children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. It consists of approval of amendments and payroll and payment of bills. Any movement for that, any motion there? All righty, is there a second? All right, Mrs. Baker has motioned, and Mrs. Pearson has seconded the approval of the consent agenda for tonight. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda for approval of amendments and payroll and payment of bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Action items. Approval of Virginia High School League membership applications and Sunday play in emergency situations for 24-25 for both CCHS and EVHS. Is there any motion on this?
Move to approve.
I second.
All right, we have had a motion from Mrs. Hutchins and a second by Ms. Smith for the approval of the Virginia High School League membership applications and Sunday play in emergency situations for 24-25 CCHS and EVHS. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, we will vote on this action item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, down to the next one. Authorization for the superintendent to fill vacancies between June 25th and August the 11th of 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Desalay. There has been a motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Desalay for the authorization for the superintendent to fill vacancies. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. All right, approval of the May VSBA policy updates. We're having one reading only. These have been available online for everyone to have time to read. And is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Who was the second, Pat? Okay. There has been...
It was Kelly.
It was Kelly? Okay. Approval of VSBA policy updates. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the approval of the policy updates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're down to approval of CCPS non-VSBA policy regulations. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Ms. Smith has moved. Is there a second? Ms. Pearson has seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote on the approval of CCPS non-VSBA policy regulations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, it is approved. Next one is approval of Special Education Advisory Committee, which is called SEAC, the members for 24-25. Is there a motion to accept this? Mrs. Baker has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Betsy is the... Ms. Smith is the second. So, any discussion? All right, we had the motion by Mrs. Baker and the second by Ms. Smith. It is time to vote on the approval of Special Education Advisory Committee, SEAC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, it passes. Approval of CCPS CTE, Local Planning, 24-25. Is there a motion to move forward?
So moved.
Mrs. Desalay has made the motion. Is there a second? Ms. Pearson? Ms. Pearson? So there is a motion and a second for the CCPS CTE, Local Planning, 24-25. Is there a discussion?
Madam Chair, staff's available if you would have any questions. Mr. Randy Richards-Lutz was planning to be here, but was unable to do so. Last-minute item. Mr. Hallman is here to answer any questions you may have, and I can perhaps answer a few questions if need be. So while you have this item before you, we're happy to answer any questions you may have before you vote on the matter. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchins?
I have no questions, but I always find this report fascinating and amazing at the number of students that we have across the board involved in our CTEC programs and how much our staff does to provide those tremendous opportunities and varied opportunities and that we are constantly looking to find more ways to provide these opportunities for our students. So thank you all for that.
Any other comments? Everyone sort of agrees. CTEC has really blossomed. And for my comment, between Mrs. Richards-Lutz and Mr. Summers Scales, the program that is amazing is also led by amazing people, which when you put the two things together, what else are you going to come out with, other than something spectacular? Those people over there work long hours. They come in for activities at night. There's a thing called Nexus that goes on. Lots of different things that the community can come to. You just need to pay attention to the schedules and see what's there to go enjoy and see how fascinating the place is. Any other comments? So hearing none, and I believe we had the motion and the second. Now we will vote. All those in favor of approval of the CTEC local plan for CCPS? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Six oh. Action, if any, on new course offerings, medical terminology, dual enrollment. Mr. Hallman can give us information if we need it. Is there a motion to move forward on this?
So moved.
All right, who wants to say?
I don't care.
All right, you moved, you seconded. How's that? Ms. Baker made the motion, Mrs. Smith made the second. If you have any questions on any of it, I know Mr. Hallman certainly can answer them for us. Anyone have any questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. I'll make a comment. My daughter is interested in... She's on a track to become a doctor, and she heard of this, and she was like, oh, how awesome, you know, and how much she wished that she had... It had been there when she was coming through. But just made the comment that CTEC is just going above and beyond in that field. So just wanted to point that out. Any second, we're good?
Yes, I would just add, and just for clarification, Ms. Smith, just in case there's that impression. The course will be offered at both high schools. It will be... Consider it a gateway course for our students that we are trying to offer more robust courses with respect to the medical field entry level. We're working very closely with our partner, UVA Health, Culpeper. So yes, we're trying to provide them with some avenues. They are working with us in terms of helping us provide an instructor. Hopefully, that can be dual enrollment. That is where we're going to aim for. This will be a dual enrollment course. If not, we can offer it non-dual enrolled as well. Logistically, yes, students have registered, but once... If the board so chooses to approve this, we'll go back through and see if this would be something that students would like to take in the first year as schedule changes, understanding that the first year, we may not have that many takers because of what's set. But we feel that with our partners, both with Germana and the hospital, that this is a gateway course we should be offering. So that's why we bring it to you at this time. Mr. Hallman, anything else that you need to add, sir? Thank you.
Any other comments? I would like to say, so that the public understands, the courses that we offer in CTEC are under the umbrella of what used to be vocational and now is career and technical. Those are researched out to make sure that we're meeting community needs. That, yes, it's hard to get certain types of jobs within the hospital. So if we're offering some of the courses that allows the child to become employed here in the community, we're only helping ourselves as a community. Same way with the auto mechanics, the HVAC. I know that a child that was very good at HVAC ended up becoming one of our employees on HVAC, because you can't find those people. So what we have managed to create here through the people at central office and within our school buildings is really pretty impressive for our community to be able to have those things that help us continue to keep young people in our community, which then helps with taxes and everything else. All right, so we've had discussion. Is there any other comments? Then we will vote. All those in favor of the new course offering of medical technology, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, naming of the CCHS tennis courts.
Madam Chair. Due to the personal connection with that, I will recuse myself.
Understandable. Is there a motion to name the tennis courts after Mr. Hutchins?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Baker. Is there any comments on naming the courts for Mr. Hutchins?
I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate you coming and speaking to the board, you know, from your history with Coach Hutchins, because he's before my time and didn't have the honor of meeting him. So it's very, very nice to hear, you know, about him as a person and what he's contributed to the school. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Anybody?
I just wanted to say I think it's very appropriate, and I know it's been difficult on Elizabeth, but I think it'd be a very fitting honor. And I just wanted to amend our support to that.
All right, the only other thing to clarify is in the admin committee, when we looked at this, the tennis courts don't really strike being a center. So we want to change the name of it to be the Ron Hutchins Tennis Courts, not Tennis Center. If you ever build a building around there, I guess we can change it to Tennis Center, but until then, we'll stay with Tennis Courts. And I too appreciate your comments. When I listened to you, I remember when I came over here and was interviewed by Mr. Pearson. And we talked about everything under the sun. Ms. Pearson was trying to ask questions to find out if I could teach or not. And Bill's comment was that, you know, if you can coach and coach decently and well, you probably are a really good teacher, which I appreciate those comments. So hearing you with effort, improvement, and always being a teacher, that's what a coach is. They just, instead of their love of learning for some subject, they're giving you your love of learning of whatever sport it is that they're involved with. So I would make those comments, too. So with that, all those in favor?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Do we have to make a motion to change it, or just your statement enough?
We had agreed to make it the tennis courts.
Courts.
And so it should have been in there, tennis courts.
Do we need to word the motion that way?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we name the CCH tennis courts the Ron Hutchins...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right.
Okay, I make a motion that we amend the motion. I meant that...
Just amend your motion to add.
Okay. I'm amending the emotion. The motion to name the tennis courts the CCHS Ron Hutchins Tennis Courts.
All right.
Second.
Second on that. So we have an amendment to the motion. We never voted on the first motion, so I think we have to vote on the first motion.
No, you voted on the amendment.
Amendment first, okay.
We'll get this.
Yeah. Robert's rules and I are not just the best of friends yet. All right, so we have amended motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amended motion to have the tennis courts named CCHS Ron Hutchins Tennis Courts? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now am I good? Six oh.
No, vote on the motion.
No.
Now that kind of kills the other one, doesn't it?
Not six oh.
All right.
Chrissy? No, it's five oh.
Oh, it's...
Because Chrissy's... Five oh, she recused. It's hard to keep track. What can I say? Now vote on the main motion.
All right, so we are up to the superintendent and staff reports. So Dr. Bradts?
Madam Chair, members of the board, first item on here, just a brief update. Where are we with budget FY '25? Well, I don't think some significance here. That would not be the correct item. We'll sit tight for just a moment. And all I need is a reference point. Okay, there's your reference point. So yeah, just right at the end of May, we received a memorandum from the state superintendent telling us that, guess what, a Calc tool is available. We've been talking to you about. The conferees had a budget. Governor did not like it, called them back in special session. So the special session concluded on May the 13th, in which both the House and the Senate agreed, and then subsequently, the governor signed the budget. Yes, that was second week of May. It takes some time for the Budget Office and the VDOE Finance Department to send us out exactly what those calculations look like. So they came out on that day, available on May the 29th. That's been since our last meeting, but prior to this meeting. Pleased to report that sometimes it pays to be good and sometimes it pays to be lucky, and I think Culpeper County Public Schools is a little bit of both in this case. We were... Had built a budget centered on the number of students of 83-40, keeping with that number, and with state revenue anticipated of $77.6 million. That's what we built. Based on this Calc tool, adjusted for our enrollment, subtracting those things that go over to food service, we're looking at 77.8. So we are in a good space. We have as much and maybe slightly more coming our way from the Commonwealth. So that is good news. No amending, which wouldn't be required anyway, and we're not amending that number to that number, because again, that is a budget estimate. But it's good that we are in the ballpark. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but I just wanted to show the last sequence of dates and when we learned about the Calc tool and that we feel very, very, very good about the Calc tool going forward for FY '25. Still wrapping up, as you'll hear from Mr. Shomo, for FY '24, which has been quite tight because of the October gift of All In Virginia money being pulled out of our appropriation to be used a different way. So again, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any members? Questions?
Okay, I'll move on to the next item, Ms. Brown. That would be CCHS and EVHS graduate info. Since we haven't met since graduation, with not being able to have the work session because of the holiday, this is the first time we've been together since our commencement exercises of 2024. I do not have the clicker, so if you want to click through me, for me... Ms. Jamison, that would be great. So I'm not going to read each item to you, but in comments, you've probably heard 315 graduates at Culpeper County High School. I think what's significant are those next three items. Happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the items, and Mr. Hallman is here to help elaborate or embellish on any of those items. But I think what's very key is what's been said here tonight in reinforcing career and technical education. All kinds of education, but this shows students going to employment, enlisting in the military, and then enrollment in different types of colleges, four-year, two-year, trade schools, those kinds of things. So that's pretty awesome. To include, but not limited to, how many of our graduates, as you noticed in the CTE report that Ms. Hutchins referenced, a lot of those students earning industry credentials. A number of those students are earning more than one industry credential. So happy to elaborate anymore on that. Plus, again, from CCHS, 16 students graduated with an associate's degree as well. Next slide, please. Graduation from additional credits for CCHS, total college credits earned, Governor's School graduates, Germana Scholar graduates, that's the total for your... Adding those two together gets your associate's degrees, and a number of different types of SEALS. Okay, I think the next slide should be CC... Excuse me, EV? Nope, a few more SEALS, and then move on. I promised you I wouldn't read all these to you. Okay, Eastern View, 336 graduates. Again, employment, enlistment, enrollment, the top three numbers. Going into the workforce, going into the military, attending two-year college nursing trade school or attending a four-year. All those listed there for you. Number of earning industry credentials, college credit, and also those students graduating with an associate's degree. Next slide. Total college credits earned. And think of that, that's from the combination of our dual enrollment offerings and both Germana Scholars and Mountain Mystic Governor's School. Lots of different governor's SEALS there with respect to the Virginia diploma. Next slide. And then another list of SEALS and diploma types. I think that's the last slide? Yes, no, it's not? Okay, total graduates added together for you for 2024, 652. Happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for your support in getting us to the finish line. As I like to say, commencement is the fulfillment of why we do what we do. Yes, pre-K is absolutely important. K is important. K1-5 is important. Middle school's important. It's all important. It's fantastic. But, end of the day, we are judged on those 652 that go off to their next step. And we really believe that coming out of Culpeper County Public Schools, they are prepared for the next step, whatever they choose it to be. Thanks.
Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am?
I had a question, really, just because I wasn't as familiar with it. And Ms. Brown, you may be able to answer it, being a former history and civics person here in the county. But the SEAL or the Excellence in Civics Education Board of Education thing that's on there, what exactly is involved in that? I noticed, you know, both schools had different amounts, and I was curious about that. Was not familiar with it.
I'm familiar with it, but he's the expert, so we'll go with him.
The most significant piece of that is community service or service hours.
Okay.
So you have to do well in, obviously, your history in government classes, but also put in the number of hours. And so that number had been down the previous few years because there were a couple of years we were shut down, right? Not a lot going on. But since then, students have picked up the hours, and so that's... and so that's, they hit that pretty hard.
Well, it was one of the ones that had a little more significant difference between the two schools, where CCHS had a lot more double of what was at Eastern View, and I wasn't really sure what was involved in it, so I was just curious.
It could just come down to who's pushing the hours the most.
Okay.
A staff member has to kind of oversee that.
Yes.
And so you have to have someone who's willing to make sure that you're telling me the truth and you're giving me the correct law and not just, sure. So part of it is having that person, I know that Mr. Miller was at EV and very big on it. And so the numbers when he was there were a lot larger than they are now, so.
And I'm not really worried about the size of the numbers. I was just, it was one of the ones I was looking back and forth, and they were all really comparable. And, you know, we just had, you know, great stuff going on with SigTech and everything else that was in there. And I was just, was not familiar with that. When it said civics education, I wasn't thinking service hours. I was thinking government, civics, like, was there like some special test they got to take or something? And obviously not. Thank you.
Just the extra hours.
All right. Future educators to be in that?
One more item.
Yeah.
Lab school, future educators academy, we just talked about associate's degree. And I won't go into great detail about our status. Well, I'm going to say something about the status, but I'm not going to rehash all the details of the lab school. Two-year program, associate's degree in education, partnership of four years to be able to teach into and grow your own in that manner for elementary students and some, and special ed teachers. Elementary, excuse me, elementary teachers and special ed teachers. It's, we were the second approved lab school, governor's initiative to do partnerships with higher ed. The Board of Education, to include the state superintendent, still thinks it's probably one of the most generalizable programs to the other 23, what, another 22 community colleges. Very excited about it. Stay tuned. Why stay tuned? It's, we're at a crisis moment right now in terms of the funding situation. Not from the school system, not from the county, not necessarily from the state, but from the logistics of what happened with that budget approval in May 13th, on May 13th by the General Assembly, placed some budget language into the approved budget. And of course, lots of deals are made to approve a budget, but one of those items in there, even already having a signed contract, placed a stipulation that a fiscal agent needed to be a part of the lab school, and that fiscal agent had to be a four-year degree granting institution. We've had four-year partners, JMU, University of Mary Washington, others. But not to the level of being the fiscal agent, meaning the money comes from the state to the fiscal agent, then it's dispersed to run the lab school. So that's a challenge, because we do not have a four-year partner that understands or can, at a short notice, become the fiscal agent. I say short notice, and that the application was due on Friday, June 7th. The board meets this week, Wednesday or Thursday, on June 13th, whatever day of the week that is. This is impactful because all new operational funds to run the program and to receive the $1 million that we were allocated for our four-county proposition, Rappahannock, Orange, Madison, and Culpeper, won't go through that. But we are at a point of, if this funding does not work, is it sustainable in another way? I've had individual calls, multiple with state superintendent, just Thursday with the Secretary of Education, state superintendent, representatives of the Board of Education. The Attorney General is involved in terms of the way the funding mechanism will go. It's been a real challenge, because the notion of planning funds that we use to develop the program and pay staff to develop the idea around how this program's going to work, school training and counseling the students and what the two-year program looks like, how it will be accepted totally into a school of education, not into just a college, but the school of ed will accept this two-year degree from Germana, and Germana's work on this. All that was fine with the planning grants, because that's already happened. But the operational funds, they're saying not so fast, it has to go through a four-year. So I'm giving you this update. It's not particularly good news, but I say stay tuned, because I really believe from the governor's office, the Secretary of Education, to include the Department of Education, if we do not qualify for the actual lab school funding, that they want to see our particular program survive and be funded alternatively. We don't know what that means yet. But again, they're excited about our program. Loved our proposal, loved the notion of teacher shortage, what? We can have students back in the classroom after taking two years of higher ed, after getting their associate. You know all that part. But the, I would just say that the bureaucracy of what's happened with this approved budget has put a stipulation on us that we're not sure we can resolve. The Board of Education has to approve the applications. Application for fiscal agent and partner application, I mean, it's, this is a new document. This was not a part of the agreement when we started. 18 months ago, if we would have known, hey, you need a four-year financial partner, we could have figured that out. But you can't figure that out in two weeks. So happy to answer any questions you may have, but keep the faith. I think we can, we'll figure this out. If it's not this bucket of funds, we'll find another bucket. And I don't mean Culpeper. You have three other school divisions that are absolutely invested in making this work. We have students who are signed up, students and families excited about this path, that they're going to get their education, their associate's degree in education in two years with their respective school divisions, in that cohort located at the Daniel Technology Center. I mean, it's, we're all in to make it work. We just, did I say all in? I cannot believe I said that, because that's a dirty word on another, another front. With taking their money out of the budget, right? We're committed to making this happen one way or the other. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone?
Just wanted you to know the score.
I'd like to say thank you for all the work, because disappointing doesn't even begin to have the right word for having the rug pulled out from under you in something that is truly unique and needed with education and teaching the way it is today. Everybody else good? All right, now instructional report, Mr. Hallman and Ms. Lane. Yeah, I was looking for you back there. I lost you.
Good evening. In 20 years, I've never gone off script, so I hope I'll be forgiven, but. Ms. Glass, I was at Culpeper County Middle School, your student aide, and I can't stand before you and not thank you. The way you approach your job professional and kind stuck with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjericana. I appreciate it.
And then the last thing I'll say is I did not play high school tennis, but I married a high school tennis player, so I'm happy to take home the good news. So it's June 10th, and we had all those graduations that were successful, and we're already on our second week of summer academy and extended school year. So I'll start first with Title I Summer Academy. And because ESER funds have gone away, we're back to serving Title I schools, Farmington, Pearl Sample Elementary, and Sycamore Park. We're serving over 241 students, rising first through fifth grade. We have 26 teachers, that's 18 classroom teachers, four resource teachers, two ESL, and two SPED, along with paraeducators, nurses, and behavior interventionists. The dates are June 3rd through the 27th, Monday through Thursdays. We run 8:15 to 1:30, and I'm not sure why location is all capital, but it is. It's Sycamore Park this year. So it keeps our transportation and food service busy, as we offer transportation breakfast and lunch. We're covering reading, math, and STEM, and we have resources of STEAM, art, music, and PE. Extended school year serves students with disabilities who meet the criteria and whose IEP team has determined they require support and services during the extended period in the summer. ESY is serving about 180 students with disabilities within two programs, elementary and secondary. The elementary program has 14 teachers with 28 paraeducators. Secondary has five teachers with 13 para-professionals. Each site has support of behavior specialists and family support specialists. That does run longer. It runs June 3rd through July 11th, Monday through Thursdays. There's no ESY the week of July 4th. The day is a little shorter, 8:30 to 11:30. And the school sites are Yow Elementary and Culpeper County High School. Transportation and breakfast are provided. As I mentioned, this keeps our transportation department very busy. They have routed over 360 students. Summer Academy ridership, of the 231 routed, 193 are riding. Special transportation of the 136 routed, 117 are riding as of June 5th. High school has 39 and elementary 78. This also keeps food service busy, and within the first three days, they've served over 888 meals. Summer Academy breakfast, 286, lunch, 424, and ESY breakfast, 178. Greg Beamer also likes to advertise our summer feeding programs that are available in the county. Breakfast and lunch are served together each day from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., May 28th through July 26th, closed July 4th. This is at the Galbraith Marshall Building on Old Fairfax Road and Yow Meadow Park at the Gardner Street entrance. For more information, you can call 540-829-2124. He also likes to advertise that summer EBT cards will be available beginning August 24th in the amount of $120. Sharing that for the community. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're just going to tag off here and go a little bit. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share some additional information with you related to the work and activities of the instruction department in the summer, taking place between now and when school begins again. It's rather lengthy list. I've tried to pare it down for you. I don't have slides of boilers and pumps being replaced or dancing kids under a papier-mache dragon, but I've got a couple props that I can share with you. Summer's a very busy time. In addition to what Ms. Lane shared about summer academy and ESY, we're continuing to review SOL data and coding and scores as they come in. This information is shared with us weekly from DOE, and we have to check it for accuracy and then check it again the next week, and then the next week, and then the next week. The data will be locked on, by DOE on July 26th, with the final refresh of data occurring between August 30th and September 3rd. By the end of September, we'll have our accreditation ratings. So that means we'll already be a month into school when we find out how well we did this past year. Right now, we're seeing the data play out about the way we have calculated it, so it's good. Our D dot and all of our principals have become experts in calculating how the students count and which ones are removed, and they come pretty darn close, believe it or not. One thing we are seeing is that we'd certainly like those chronically absent numbers to go down again. They are pretty much consistent, so we'd like to have our kids in school. They learn more efficiently when they're in the building with us. We're working on the Standards of Quality Report that may begin on June 17th, and it's due in August. We are wrapping up the 23-24 year. Our current department is currently working on seven DOE comprehensive school-level reports. These are for schools that are either Level 2 or 3, so here's a prop. This is a comprehensive report, and it has different resources for academic support, staffing supports, PD supports, and climate supports. And when I say schools that qualify, you remember red, yellow, green. And so anybody that had a yellow or red needs to have one of these reports that accompany their work. So we are assisting with that process, and these are due June 30th. We, along with support from HR and Student Services, are also working on the VDOE Division Support Plan. The sister report to all of those other ones that shows what we will be doing as a division to support all those schools in their work. Same concept, academic support, staffing supports, PD supports, and climate support. So I thank Russell and Michelle for their help with that. We've completed and started curriculum writing in multiple areas. As you may be aware, we've got brand-new standards in English and math coming at us this year. So that's going to be a particular challenge for elementary teachers, as they teach both. They'll be learning new, and there is some significant changes to the English ones. We've updated the history performance assessment materials as we continue to use performance assessments as a verified credit option for high school. And we had scores that used to be in the 60s, 60s, with ninth graders, and now we're looking at 90s because of the performance assessment ability. We are aligning local assessments to the new SOLs. We are preparing to implement, prop, student reading plans. It's a two-pager, a little bit of work for each student. For students who come up as high-risk on the vowels assessment, they will get an individualized reading plan as required by the VLA. So that will be one more thing to monitor. Supplemental reading materials have been ordered from the DOE-approved list. Prior to our scheduled PD days in August, Floyde Bens teachers will be doing PD on morphology, vocabulary, and the strategy of decoding multi-syllabic words. And the K-2 teachers will be doing supplemental program called UFLY. Then, there's more VLA stuff coming down the pike. When the modules are released from VDOE, all core K through 8 teachers, special ed teachers, and ESL teachers will participate in an online training to comply with the Literacy Act. And they have, I think, Susan said, about a year to complete that process. We did offer multiple opportunities for students to participate in the teen and parent driver ed training this year. Some students missed all of those opportunities. So we have scheduled an additional opportunity, June 25th, at Eastern View High School. Hopefully, next year, kids realize it's really important to hit one of those dates. We're applying for the School Improvement Grant to support three of our federally identified schools with additional professional development and materials. That would be Sycamore Park for multi-race students, Farmington, and Floyde Bens with students with disabilities. The CTE and Career Partners dates have been set. Have something for you. I know that many of you like to participate in the CTE and Career Partners events. You've got those scheduled there for you. Just get those on your calendar. We have ongoing meetings with the Culpeper Workforce Pipeline Committee. You saw in Randy's description of the new course how that group's been meeting, and that course came a result of those meetings. We good? Because of those meetings, it came very clear to us from the hospital how important this medical terminology course would be. And then longer discussions, it was like, okay, how can we make this work? Germana struggles to find instructors, and they have multiple campuses spread far wide. And the hospital said, we might be able to step up and help you with instructors. And so then the talk gets going, this can really happen. So we're talking with Germana now to see if some of these candidates might meet their criteria and be instructors for us. So we wanted to get this to you quickly, to get it approved, so we can start the rest of the process and get it in place for August. Let's see, we're ongoing review of all the 2024 transcripts before they go to the state for reporting. We'll be sending a team of people to the DOE Literacy and Math symposiums. And finally, celebrating its 37th year is SummerQuest. SummerQuest is a summer regional governor's school welcoming gifted students from Faukeer, Rappahannock, Orange, Culpeper, and Madison. Program will take place at Emerald Hill from July 8th to July 18th, running Monday through Thursday. And it serves about 110 students, with 20 of those from Culpeper. That's a little bit of what instruction does in the summer. Any questions? Any questions?
Any questions, any comments?
Again, not a question, just wow. You don't take off in the summer.
It does not slow down.
No, no, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Everybody thinks that schools close down for the summer and nobody does anything, and summer is always as busy, if not busier, than the school year in getting ready for the upcoming school year. And all of the training and review of data and information that you all have to go through to prepare for the upcoming year, as well as send off our graduates to the world out there, takes place during the summer, and we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nope. All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Shomo in the finance report. And joining us is our new finance director, Mr. Dean.
My last one. I think it's been thirty years of them. I missed a couple, but not very many. And June was always the best one because, you know what? We got a break in July. Tonight, we're still working with efficiency and student counts from March thirty-first count, so we had to live with that. So it's about six hundred and fifty-six thousand. So that's what we've been planning around. The budgets have pretty much been what they are. Right now, we're anticipating the top number to be about a hundred and ten million, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of revenues from different sources. So we'll be short about three point nine million dollars. Of that shortage, three point three million is from an all-in pupil funding that the state kinda sent along our way in basically the fall of the year, last October, November. So that's what's caused the major piece of that, and basically it was, the total number from the state we were looking to get is fine, but they're telling us how they spend about three point, three million dollars of it. Because we were expecting about seventy million dollars, or seventy-three million dollars from the state, we actually ended up somewhere near sixty-seven, sixty-eight million. With that said, we're three point nine million short with that and six hundred and fifty-six thousand from A D M. The budget expenditures, they've been tracking pretty consistent for the last months, and right here it can show you that these numbers are pretty much in line with last year's spending plan, with the percent at most. So we're right now looking at a hundred and nine million, eight sixty-seven, as opposed to a hundred and fourteen, a hundred and fourteen million dollars. So with that, we're looking at about a balance at the end of the day of like three hundred and sixty-two thousand, which would be great if we get there. We still have a lot of living to do. You can see we still have like twenty-five percent of the budget to spend after tonight. We get two payrolls to cut and one closeout meeting for payables. So all that's still in flux coming forward. But we're hoping to hit that number where we will have a positive balance in the end. And we have no reason not to believe that, but like I said, we are still on track to do that. We made some choices that hold back from spending that we normally would have done, like some of the schools, we used to give them about five hundred thousand at the end of the year. We're only gonna be able to do about two hundred and fifty thousand this year. So that's gonna be one of the cuts we're gonna make. With that said, that's about it for that. I'd like to introduce Neil, Mr. Dean, as my replacement. How do you take a stand? He's taken a lot of pressure off my shoulders, and I think he's gonna be working out fine. We worked last week together and already again this week. I think you lucked out. I think he's gonna be a fine replacement for me and probably do it much better than I did. You know, you're kinda getting a rut, but I look forward to retirement. I got exciting things to do, I hope. Just try to keep the health. My family welcomed a new grandson about ten days ago. He's doing fine. So I have a lot, a new toy to play with. I shouldn't say that, but if I'm looking at it. But I want to thank each and every one of you for the support you give me over the years, too. I couldn't have done it. It was about a team effort between my staff, the people around me. It's been enjoyable. I came here thinking I was only gonna stay a couple years and go back to North Virginia, but thirty years later, still here, and it's been a good run, and I appreciate everything you've done for us. Any questions? Okay.
Can we all come to the beach sometime?
Uh, yeah. Bring a hammer.
We're gonna miss you, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're up to the operations report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bradz. I am happy to give the operations report for what I kinda call the year in review, because we've done a lot of stuff this year, and I just wanted to take a moment to kinda remind you a little bit about all the work that was done. Starting way back at the beginning of the year, you know, we finished the roof replacement on C M S, which was a mighty large project, as well as added that new athletic field that now has grass on it, even though that's an older picture, and it's coming together quite well. And we did the E V classrooms this year, where we were able to bring on ten additional instructional spaces, including spaces for our special ed classes. And we added the Agro Science Building and did some track and field work with some additional fencing over at C C H S and replaced their bleachers. Pearl Sample, you know, Rob mentioned that he didn't have any pictures of boilers. Well, I do. Here are the boilers. And the R T Us that we included on the roof of Pearl Sample, along with the Farmington R T U. We also did some hot water heaters, which is just as good as boilers. And so you can see, we did a lot this summer. There was a lot of things. We used some S R funds, and then we got into our capital improvement plan. But summer projects, what's going on now? Well, we're doing the track replacement. I don't know if you've been by C C H S. They started grading that today, taking off the top layers, and then we're gonna do some resurfacing at the Eastern View track. We know about the tennis courts. You heard word about the tennis courts. They're actually putting the fencing in now, when I drove by this evening. So they're putting up the poles, getting it all into place, and then I believe they've already paved the new tennis court over at Eastern View as well. We are doing the gym floor replacement. They're starting that this week, is the intent to do that. They had a vehicle issued this morning and couldn't get there and start pulling the floor, doing the demo as they'd planned, but they plan on doing that first thing in the morning. We're also adding an L E D light system at C C H S with the Musco controls. And the bus yard, which is near and dear to my heart, we're gonna do a lot of work there, which includes extending some of the concrete, fixing the drainage, and hopefully rehabilitating the tanks that are in the back, chipping and painting them, which is gonna help expand, extend their lives, because those tanks are getting a little old. The mower, bay shed replacement, and it's funny, because I was told they built it back in the sixties, but Beau came to me and said, no, 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 it was seventy-one. So it's a year older than me, that shed is. So it might even look better. But the point is, is that's another project that we have on the books that we're gonna start working on this summer. And on the horizon, obviously, the middle school's a big task ahead of us, and this is kind of the timeline when it comes to the architecture and design that we've already been doing. We've been having our design meetings, and the idea is that they're supposed to start developing the construction documents. We have a couple of things that we're still kinda working through with Architect and with the administration, making sure that we're finding the right solution to fit the needs for not just, you know, in the next five years, but the next fifteen, twenty years. And the intent is to start bidding for general contractors in January. And this is what I call the phasing plan, and I know it's kinda, there's a lot on it when you look at it, but remember, the intent of this is to be an occupied renovation, meaning we wanna keep kids in the building. We also don't want to use trailers if we don't have to, with the idea that we keep everybody on campus under the same roof. Now, we will have to move some things around, but we're not gonna have the need to put an entire grade level out in trailers. As you can see, the very first thing they're gonna do, starting in April of next year, is building that tower that's at the top of that diagram, and then they will, the year after that, work on the eighth grade and the main office, as well as doing during the summer, the fine arts wings, the kitchen, the gym, the locker rooms, and the last thing they'll do would be seventh grade in the media center. So you can see how they have this plan. The estimate is to complete this renovation sometime in the summer of 2027, with the idea that when kids come back in the fall of 2027, they'll have a complete new school, even though a lot of them will already be staying in the new wing as we kinda shift students around within the building. I kinda threw this up as just a teaser. This is a rendering that was done by the architecture to show you what the rear parent drop-off is gonna look like at C M S, which is a far different cry than what it looks like right now. But it's impressive. I love the colors and everything that they used in this, because it really does speak to what the modern, taking it and modernizing what the building looks like. And again, preserving the roof, even though back on this initial one, you see that big, what I call the gallery walk going through the center of the building. They've actually since changed that. It's just gonna be high on the two ends so that we preserve more of that roof in the middle. But that just gives you kind of an idea of where we're at with C M S. And then, of course, elementary school number seven. We know the location is somewhere in Greens Corner area, and I wanted to make sure I just took this picture and said, this isn't the actual property, even though it'd be nice with Mount Pony in the background. But again, the intent with that is, in fact, tomorrow, we're gonna interview at least five A and E firms. The Joint Capital Improvement Committee's gonna do that and then start making some decisions about moving forward with the design. Food service for the year, we're up. Participation's up, which is great to see, especially with the C E P programs going into place, because we know that's gonna help us, because we can't necessarily rely on free and reduced lunch rates. However, those are still looking good for us in terms of getting support and federal funds, and you can see what that looks like with Farmington and Sycamore Park still being the highest, while elementary side, Emerald Hill, is the lowest. Our overall district total's forty-six point nine seven in free and reduced lunch rates. Technology this year, we did a lot on expanding security with cameras and badge access, adding that in different locations, upgrading and replacing A V equipment. As you know, not just at Eastern View, but we actually are doing a lot of P A systems. We're looking at doing over the summer and working on refreshing our Chromebook inventory and a lot of network improvements in terms of switches and some of the things that we call the backbone of the network. We've done a lot of improvements on that, all again in an effort to improve our security and make sure we're protecting data, whether that be student or teacher alike. Transportation, here's our stop-arm violations, and as you can see, back in March, we had three hundred and twenty-one citations. And then it kinda starts to dwindle down, but something to keep in mind, we also had fewer days. In April, we had two hundred and forty-six, so it starts to, you know, wane as it goes, and then in May, it was down to two hundred and two. Once again, last day of school was on the seventeenth, so we didn't have near as many buses continuing through that month. We did also this year get our new gas-powered seventy-seven passenger bus that we needed to plug a hole, as well as the mini-bird. And this is some data that was pulled from Senovia, our G P S system, and I know I've had to explain it like three or four different ways, because it's kinda complicated, but what we did is we were able to pull something called an average. And the average tells us, well, how often are buses earlier than they're supposed to be there, or how often are they later to a bus stop? And so that would be plus or minus two minutes. So it's kind of a five-minute window. If I say the bus is gonna, like, my son would get picked up at seven twenty-two A M., and if the bus was there at seven twenty-three, seven twenty-four, seven twenty-five, it would say, it was, it was there, it was on time, but if it was seven twenty-six, it's late. And that would go into that average and say that's the amount of times it was late. So if we took what I did, just to kinda make it more easier to understand, I took the averages for the month of April, compared it to the yearly. So that's kind of, I know it's a little bit of number play, and it gets a little confusing, but it was kind of difficult to pull the entire year and get those rates correct, because there were so many other things that get involved in it. But what we've been able to determine that we were earlier than scheduled almost twelve percent of the time. We were later than scheduled about four percent of the time when compared to how we do in April. So that gave us kind of an overall performance of about ninety-one and a half percent. And the other thing to consider, I tell you like monthly, I say, hey, we routed about sixty-two hundred kids. Well, that actually equates to more than twelve thousand stops a day, because you're picking those kids up in the morning and then you're dropping them off in the afternoon. Now granted, that's another part of the data, because I'm trying to be as transparent as possible, that doesn't include, well, there's community stops. You know, we drop a whole bunch of kids off at one location, but it still counts them all as individuals, as kids. So that's twelve thousand, two hundred and three stops, and it shows you how those look. We did one point two million miles from August tenth through May seventeenth. Most of the miles were on bus thirty-five, eighty-three, and bus three, which surprisingly were Emerald Hill buses. And then when you looked at their route, you realize there's one that goes all the way out, like the campground road, and then up over to Amosville and then back around. So not a long route, well, a long route in terms of distance, but the timeliness of the route actually worked in the favor, but it was a lot of miles on it. We did roughly fifteen hundred field trips this year, and that includes athletics and academics. And our longest daily routes are to Charlottesville and Springfield right now, and we have one going to Richmond pretty soon, and those are our outplacements. We also did some work with a collaborative effort with our I T R Ts to create video public service announcements. It was kind of amazing to me when you talked to administrator and they sat a kid down and said, hey, we heard you said this on the school bus. You said this phrase, blah, blah, blah. Oh, I didn't do any such thing. They pulled the video, and it's hi-def, it's audio, and the kid's like, oh my, how did you get that? You know, and it's like, well, we have five cameras on the bus. They're hi-def, they record sound, and we realized a lot of kids don't know that. They don't know how well it works. So the idea of this P S A is to just remind kids, give them a gentle reminder, they're on tape. You know, it's, I mean, you're not in the classroom, you're in the hallway, you know, we have cameras, but this is a unique place, it's a unique location, and it provides us that extra oversight in case something happens. So it's gonna cover the behavior on the bus, expectations at the bus stop, what they should be doing, how to keep the bus clean, just trying to teach kids that there aren't janitors who clean up the buses, the drivers do, and it's a lot when a kid's dumping their chips on the back. So we wanna make sure we address that as well. And then for the community, we're also working on some P S As for stop-arm cameras, so that, or I'm sorry, the stop-arm violation, so they kinda understand that as well. But that's all I have. That was, it was a lot. We did a lot this year. I'm very happy and proud of the work that the folks, the directors, they did all the work, they manage their people, and I'm thankful for them.
Any comments, questions? Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
I know you're shocked, but I have driven past the tennis courts several times.
You have?
Yes, and I think some of the workers at C C H S were a little paranoid. They kept watching me drive around the courts. They were working away. I was looking, so. I think that a lot of the community is not aware of our free and reduced lunch qualification, that that many of our students do qualify, almost forty-seven percent of our student body. And I think that there are a lot of folks who move into the community and are not aware of that and that the needs of our students as a result, that allows them to qualify for that. And I also have heard good comments about improvement on And I also have heard good comments about improvement on the bus situations, the arrival and pickup time. So thank you all and everyone on the staff for that.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, Mr. Brian. All right, let's see. Operations now, it's board member reports. I think I shocked Ms. Desolay when I picked her first last time, so Ms. Smith, you get to be first.
I don't really have a comment except to say that, just looking back on the year, it was a great year. But I have heard some positive comments from some families affected by, impacted whatever, by our summer school and extended year program. And just want to say thank you for that and to our staff for how hard they work all year
Yes, ma'am.
First graduation was impressive, 652 graduates and seeing the data there as to where all of our students were going, where they've been accepted and where they're moving on with their lives. It's a testament to all of our staff who helps them get there from the time they walk in the door as little biddies until they make the decisions and move forward. So thank you all for that. Thank the staff for an additional, another very successful year. Thank you, Jeff, Mr. Shomo. Thank you, Ms. Jamison, for all that you've done for us for all these many years. And thank you to the board.
All right, Mrs. Baker, you're next.
I think everything has kind of been said. I learned a whole lot tonight. That was a lot of information tonight. And just thank you to all of our senior staff and our administrators and all of our teachers. I think it was a really good year. And thank you to everybody for everything that you've done. And have a very happy and safe summer.
Again, I can echo the comments of my fellow board members. It's been very interesting, last year when I was sitting in the audience, hearing the reports, and now being on this side of the podium, it's been very interesting to go from perhaps being on the dance floor and closing out a school building and knowing how that goes, to now seeing the view from the balcony, how the school system closes out one year while they're continually preparing for the next year. And I've been very impressed with everyone's work and I just want to thank everyone. And I know you'll get a little time for a break this summer and I hope you all enjoy it. Thank you.
I would like to reiterate everything everyone else has said, but I'd also like to acknowledge Ms. Browning. Obviously, you've had an effect on people in our community through your work in our libraries. So thank you. And good to know, Ms. Lane, that she had that effect for you. Librarians are unique people. They love their books and they want other people to love their books. Sometimes that's hard when teachers are assigning books and you just want to enjoy one, because I'm a slow reader. That is not one of my, I want to take it slowly, I want to understand it, I want to enjoy it, not just fly through it. So on that note... Deborah, I am so sorry. You were sorry with you last time and almost forgot you.
I don't have anything important to say. Enjoy your summer and thank you for being here tonight. We're good.
Anybody else? I think Jeff's something over there. Mr. Shomo, you want to do a shout-out? Grandpa? No shout-out from grandpa? Okay, I'll be your friend. All right, board member reports, informational items, as the committee reports, memberships, policy reviews that were not reviewed but not revised. We just put the new date on it so that we can know that we did at least look at it and nothing's really changed. Local regulations, future dates, the planning, capital planning, it's meeting on June 12th. Finance meets again on the 24th, as does the business work session at CCHS studio. And I believe that's a wrap, other than to go into closed session, I think you lead us into that.
I move that the school board convene a closed session at 7:14 p.m. to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the transfer of classified personnel, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the approval of technology summer interns, the approval of maintenance summer workers, the approval of EBHS co-op student, the approval of CCHS co-op student, the approval of instrumental supplements for the 24, 25 school year, the approval of club coaching supplements for the 24, 25 school year, the discussion of the superintendent's evaluation, and the discussion of student matters related to name students A and B relates from compulsory school attendance due to religious exemption as permitted by the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A2.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? We will take a five-minute break and be in closed session.